And welcome to this special meeting of the Lancaster Select Board for Monday, February 12. I appreciate everyone adjusting to the unique nature of this meeting. And I appreciate everyone's flexibility. We will hopefully be done with at least, hopefully all of it, but at least the Hawthorne Lane piece of it, prior to I know the planning board is meeting starting at seven, so. With that, I would like to call to order the special media Lancaster Select Board for Monday, February 12th. Remind the folks that this meeting is being recorded and I believe broadcast on Star Lancaster Community Television, so we thank our partners there. And I will start by doing a roll call. Mr. Allison, I don't see on the screen, he is traveling and there were some difficulties, so we may get him catcher's catch cameras, okay? Alex Turner, I see you. Are you here? You are here. I am here, so. You are here, I am here, we are ready. Okay, alright.
Chair? If we do have any quorums of other boards or committees that want to open their meetings, okay, sorry.
Alright, so I would go to finance next. Do you have a quorum of your members, Mr. Tressel?
Even this is what we do. Let us open the meeting by calling the roll with Jocelyn. Jocelyn said she would be here.
I don't see her, but that doesn't mean she's not.
Emily?
Here.
Michelle?
I'm here.
And Stan?
Doesn't look like he's here, but you have a majority.
Dick is here, so that's a quorum. And now I turn it back to the board of select.
Thank you, sir. Frank, or I see the owl. Frank, you also here?
I am here. There is a quorum of the planning board, so.
Take it away.
I am here. Sorry, trying to, trying to avoid the echo. I am here, there is a forum of the planning board here. I will call the planning board to order George Franz.
Here.
And Tina Brown.
Here.
And Dickinson.
Here.
Frank Streeter here, and I do not believe Mike Fabro is with us yet. So we have a forum, so our meeting is open. In terms of the second part of our meeting, it has been posted such that it will occur after this one, when this part of this one ends. And I encourage everyone to leave the select board and come with us to talk about the master plan.
I encourage them to do just the same. Frank, thank you. Alright. Other boards who are invited, zoning board of appeals.
Conservation.
Just, everyone can, needs to let me get through my list. Yes, Conservation Commission and Board of Public Works. I don't see the Public Works Commissioners. So Conservation Commission?
Would you answer for it?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I don't see that we have a quorum yet. We have two. But we don't have three, so we don't yet have a quorum. I do expect a quorum, but we don't have one yet.
When you do, just, Tom, just flag me down or, or throw a hand up and, and we'll call to you so you can call your meeting to order.
Yep, will do. Thanks.
My pleasure. Someone in the owl, yeah?
Sorry, Doug DeCesary from.
The DPW Commission?
DPW, I, I just, not everybody has their name, so I'm not sure if he's aware of any other members of the DPW on the board, on the call.
I don't see anyone else. I do see Doug, I don't see anyone else. Doug, would you let me know if another one of your commissioners joins, then we can have you guys call me to order?
I think you're stuck with me, the only one.
Stock, are you kidding me? We're enjoying it. Thank you. Alright. Zoning Board?
Yeah, it's Rob Alex. I am here. I'm driving. I, I believe it's only myself.
Okay. If Kate sees that changes, we'll flag you down. Oh, Tom, you've got, sorry. Yeah, we'll flag you down, Rob, if that changes, then we'll have you call me to order, Tom.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Well, just two seconds. I've recognized Tom from the Conservation Commission, so Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have a quorum now, so I'll go ahead and, and open CONCOM. That's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Bruce McGregor?
Here.
Dennis Hubbard?
Here.
Yep, okay. And Tom Seidenberg is also here.
Conservation Commission is now open.
Chairman?
Yes?
This is Gene Rich. I'm sitting with the owl. Rob may have to call up to order the Board of Appeals because Dennis and I are here. Three members.
Oh. Okay. Rob, did you hear that?
All the zoning board appeals to order, roll call vote, Gene Rich. Dennis Hubbard?
Here.
Here. Anyone seeing anyone else? No, okay, so calls to order, six oh six.
Thank you. Alright. Kendra had her hand up, I'm assuming that was about what you all just did. Okay. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss current and past circumstances and outstanding items surrounding the project commonly referred to as the Hawthorne Lane development. Kate, is there a preferred method for us to continue, or should we have an open discussion about the, the key questions that we have at hand? And maybe Avery can frame some of those if that's possible.
Good to see them. Nothing from me. What, what, the board's pleasure.
Okay. Okay, Tom, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note for the record that I am an abutter to the open space parcel, so if there's any deliberation for CONCOM, I'll be recusing myself, but I am here to speak as an abutter and I can speak to the history from the CONCOM perspective. Thanks.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the, the clarification of your circumstance. Alright, so we are here to try to determine the best path forward on this property. I would venture a guess, almost vast majority of people on this call were not, in the roles that they're in at least, when this project began and when the circumstances were set in place that have put us in the position that we're in. Ultimately, there are a number of outstanding issues with the property. One being the open space piece. I believe that the easement, and then of course, the question about whether or not the road would be a public road. And then whether or not the town would, would take that up. I guess I'm, I'm going to turn to make sure that the planning board has a similar understanding, and I'll sort of round robin it to make sure I'm not missing any issues. First, well, first, before I do that, Alex, do you have any thoughts before we go round robin to make sure we set the table on what we're hoping to discuss tonight?
Um, I don't, I would, no, I think, but Jason was our liaison, so I'm assuming that he's going to try to. I know, I understand travel is difficult today. Recap us, but my thought was that we were supposed to be getting a recap, my understanding, and understanding from council of what was going on, so.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we got it. So I'm gonna see if the other chairs have any, and if it's okay, just for the, I know we're all members of all these boards and commissions, if we can just leave it to chairs for right now to make sure that if there's any other large scale outstanding issues, and then I'll turn it to council to sort of give us an update on, on sort of where we are and level set, so I will do it in order. I will go to Planning Board, Frank, any, tonight, am I missing anything glaring?
I think those are the basic issues. There's a lot that was left undone, and we would like to see as much as possible of it done in accordance with the original order of conditions.
Thank you. Alright, Dick Tressel?
Only questioning the status now, which I guess you're about to give us, plus any other related water boosters as taken over by the town. And, and I'm also questioning the what we call fiduciary amount that is supposedly still in deposit somewhere. So, asking for that to be brought out and discussed also. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, give your hand up before I go to the other chairs.
Oh, yes, thank you. One of the things that is outstanding, that is going to need some discussion. And if they don't have a quorum here, then it would be at their next, I guess, board meeting, but is the the Mass DEP's citations for the water supply and how that needs to be handled. Including bringing something to town meeting.
And you're saying that because the DPW's, is that the DPW question, but they don't have a quorum? Is that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, that is a DPW question, but it also is probably one of the most important pieces of this because there's a, there's access to the public water supply that we have a, I think, an obligation to kind of button up.
Alright, Tom?
Yeah, thank you. So in previous communications, I said that there's two outstanding order of conditions and the question of the open space parcel. I did find out that the superseding order of conditions for the Smith violation, that has, the, the certificate of compliance has been issued. So there's only one expired order of conditions, plus the open space parcel. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
So I, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the matters that had been before the ZBA have been presented and just decided upon, I will defer to Gene in case there is anything that would be outstanding prior to me being on the board back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, Avery.
Yeah, I can start, and I do think there's a lot here, and as you can, as you correctly point out, there are many boards and committees that have interests here, so I don't know if it makes sense to give a general overview, and then we can break it up by topic is probably the way to go about this, but I defer to you, Steve.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So I think we should start with the permitting history here. The, the first application came in, in around twenty, October of twenty fifteen, and we saw the first rounds of permits and issue in twenty sixteen with a modified subdivision approval issuing in twenty seventeen. And because of the COVID extensions to permitting decisions that the governor issued, the modified subdivision approval expires on May nineteenth of twenty twenty four. So the planning board, at the request of the developer, can extend that deadline, but we are working on a May nineteenth, twenty twenty four deadline. To the extent that the deadline is not met and the project is not completed by that time, the permit will automatically rescind per its terms. So I think we'll just start by getting that information out there, that there is a deadline that we are working on, which can be extended upon the request of the developer and at the discretion of the planning board. So the first issue that many people have talked about is why isn't there a homeowners association, and I think you know, that's not something we necessarily need to get into, but one was supposed to be created and it was not created. And so there is no valid homeowners association. Some of the common areas are held in a trust, which is one of the conditions of the permits, but that does not create a homeowners association. One of the next questions is about the booster station, and we'll go into this in depth, I'm sure, later. But just for everyone's edification, the booster station is shown on a set of plans that the planning board looked at on the open space parcel. The exact location of the booster station was not indicated, like where on the open space parcel it would be located, but it was located on the open space parcel. Yes, Steve?
Avery, just, so for the purposes, because I know a lot of people call it booster, a lot of people call it pump house. So just so folks understand, that is interchangeable for the purpose of this conversation.
Correct, I'm, correct, yes, so. Pump station, booster pump station, booster station. I'm sure there's some technical term that you're actually supposed to use, but I will use those terms interchangeably tonight. So a permit was issued from the building commissioner in twenty nineteen, at the end of twenty nineteen, to cite the booster station along George Hill Road in the open space parcel. There were appeals of that decision taken. A former council issued guidance that some of the appeal was untimely, but ultimately upheld the position of the building commissioner in issuing the building permit, and the ZBA reviewed those and agreed with prior council upholding the decision. That was never appealed further by the individuals questioning the legality of the booster station. So it is cited currently in the open space parcel. In terms of ownership and maintenance, there, there's no indication in the record that the town promised to take it over. However, there is some suggestion that it was available to the town as an option. The permit that DEP issued states clearly that it, the, the ownership and maintenance of the booster station shall be done by the homeowners association until and if the town decides to take it over. But like Kate said, one of the issues that absolutely needs to be addressed from a legal, a legal position is we need to have sufficient control over the booster station so that if something goes wrong, because it is connected to our public water supply, we can go in and, and fix it. So that is imperative that we have that, and I know that we have an easement to that effect over the Eagle Hill or Eagle Ridge booster station, so there is some precedent within Lancaster for doing privately owned booster stations with an operation and maintenance agreement with the homeowners association. So while I wasn't around in twenty sixteen and seventeen when these permits issued, my guess is that there was some desire to mirror what was happening at Eagle Ridge with this development here. DEP's advice tends to be not to create situations like this, but they're not opposed to it as long as sufficient legal control is maintained, either through a binding license agreement or an easement. From our perspective as town council, I would prefer it to be an easement that is recorded. But that is one issue that will need to be addressed. In terms of the open space parcel, the permitting decisions and the zoning bylaw requires that at least forty percent, here is fifty five percent of the property be restricted with a conservation restriction or held by the Conservation Commission. So that hasn't occurred yet. That's something that should happen in order for the development to come into compliance with the permit. We can talk about how to accomplish that with a booster station. Just so everyone knows, it's not uncommon for there to be conservation restrictions with over parcels that have structures. You can do a couple different, you can do this a couple different ways. You can create building envelopes. You can exclude just certain portions of the site. So it's not in and of itself an issue that you're going to conserve a site that has a booster pump station on it, provided the legal documentation to place that conservation restriction. You know, addresses the issue that there is a booster pump station, and we will need to do sufficient maintenance, or whoever's in charge of that booster pump station is able to do that maintenance. There was a, an issue that no one is really talking that much about, so it may be moot, and I would defer to DP in this situation, but we were supposed to get a utility easement over the open space parcel and one of the lots. And I believe it's Lot nine sixty two Hawthorne Lane. We have not seen that easement. I have no indicate, I have no record of ever receiving a deed to that effect. So if that's something that the town still needs for certain purposes, which I can't speak to, we need to address that as well.
Can I interrupt for a second? Did that indicate that it was for water, or is it just you, carte blanche, utility?
Carte blanche. Yeah, I think the intent was always for it to be used for water, but the way that it's discussed and drafted is broader than that, so I don't know if we need it for electrical, I don't know if we need it for waters, but you know, I, I would defer to our town engineers and DPW to kind of guide us in that conversation. And then the, the bigger issue that lots of people have been talking about is the private way and what to do about the private way. As discussed, the permit says that either the homeowners association should hold the way or the town could take the way, but it's not a requirement anywhere in any of the permitting documents that the town acquire the way. I wasn't around at the time, like many of you, so I don't know what discussions occurred, but from the permits on their face, the town is not obligated to take the way. And we can talk about what it looks like to take a private way, but if, if that's the route that the town wants to go down. And then there was reference made to a bank account. So the surety that was involved here is, was a restriction on the sale of any individual lots. So the developer was supposed to complete all of the roadwork before he was able to sell any of the lots. That didn't occur here. There is no bond. At some point, it looks like the planning board voted to create some type of account, and the developer may have been willing to do that, and money was set aside, but our office, town staff, and the bank themselves can find no indication that the town has any rights, legal rights to those funds. So to the extent the developer is interested in giving us those funds and walking away from the project, and, and in exchange, we'll take the open space, take the way, take the booster pump station, that's something we can talk about, but legally, we have no ability to seize those funds even after the May twenty twenty four permit expiration. So I think that was a very high level overview of many topics, and so Steve, I think I defer to you on how we want to go forward, but I think from my perspective, the highlights are we need to obtain some level of control over the pump station. And whether we do that through an easement just of the pump station itself, or rather, we acquire the entirety of the open space parcel, including the pump station, is another option. There has been discussion about dividing the booster pump station from the rest of the open space parcel. I would not recommend that. While possible, it would be complicated from a legal perspective, and I don't know what the benefit necessarily would be, but we can talk about it if that's something that the town has an appetite for exploring.
Thank you. So first, I should have prefaced this conversation with, we're not going to solve it all tonight. We'll probably solve none of it tonight, but we'll get a good sense of the direction that we're headed in, and I think you framed it really, really well. And I think the, the, the specifics on the needing control of the pump station in the short run is really, really critical. I think highlighting the deadline that's looming on May nineteenth and and asking the, whether or not the, the developer will ask for an extension, whether the planning board will, will grant it is critical to us digging through some of the rest of this stuff. The utility easement was a new one for me recently. I hadn't seen that in any lists, and I would be interested to see. And Kate, maybe we can track that down after this meeting, whether or not, when it was made, if it's when it was made as a requirement, and Frank, you may know this, but whether or not that still remains necessary, but I don't want to get bogged down in that now. I think that's something that we can definitely dig into after this meeting. So it seems to me that the control of the pump station is really, really important, which means accepting, well, there's a couple options, as you just pointed out, you can get control of the pump station but not take the land. I guess I'll just try to tackle one of the big items in this, this whole townwide conversation, which is that open spaceland. My understanding, and again, understanding, so I'd love CONCOM to clarify this, but CONCOM does not want to accept the land, is that right? Tom, I don't want to speak for you, so I just want to get a sense from what the position, if you, if the Conservation Commission's taken a position on whether or not to accept the land, I just want to get a sense from you as to what that is.
So I don't believe the commission has taken a, a position, and I, I think I need to be careful about what I say.
I know, I know you have to be careful, yeah. I just wanted to, I wanted to see if you knew if they'd taken a position.
So I'll, I'll defer to Jim, who has joined the call and is vice chair. Jim?
Yeah, hi, thank you. I apologize for late. Now, the CONCOM has not taken an official position on this. When David Coates was our agent, he did give us a recommendation not to accept this parcel. He called it, air quotes, damaged goods. I am happy to see that the Smith violation now is closed. So, yeah, no official position on that from the Conservation Commission.
And he called it damaged goods, in your opinion, because the pump house was there?
I, because of the violation. Yeah, yeah.
The violation being the placing of the pump house?
No, no, I'm sorry. There was a violation on that site because the pond was altered. The, the buffer zone was, a lot of trees were cut down. And the so now there's a certificate of compliance with that Smith violation, and they did a restoration plan that probably came partway, in my opinion. So, you know, we haven't really discussed as a commission whether we accept that parcel or not.
You have and this may be asking something you haven't considered, but do you have, do you have any intention, or is it like in, in the agenda of agendas for a future meeting to discuss it, considering there's been some work already done on it?
So I don't know that it's currently on the agenda, but certainly we can get it on the agenda.
Because I would think that that, and if you're correct, if I'm wrong, with that, if we accept the open space, do we then accept the pump house in that? Because it's in the open, so that would resolve our having control of the pump house issue, yes?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, sorry, I heard a couple options tonight regarding that.
No, I know, I was just asking Avery if, if, I just want to get that clarification.
So, so the answer is yes. The way I would advise approaching it, if that's the route that the town wants to take, is that it would be acquired for, a portion of it would be acquired for conservation and recreation purposes to be held by the Conservation Commission, and then the port, the limited portion that the pump house is on would be held by the, the DPW. But we can talk about whether that makes more sense, or if the CONCOM holds the whole thing with some type of easement to the DP, like, not an easement, but allowable use to the DPW. I do want to note, though, many people may know, the town took the parcel by filing an instrument of taking. So we do not own the open space, to be clear, we do not own the open space, but the property owner has failed to pay, I think it's about sixteen hundred dollars in taxes. So if the town is interested in moving in that direction, we would likely want to negotiate some type of arrangement where the developer, that payment is made, and then the land is acquired without it, for free.
Yeah, go ahead.
Time, good time for questions?
But yeah, let me just ask one final one. So, well, not final, but one, and then I'll turn it over to you, Alex. The other option, if the CONCOM doesn't accept it, is that the select board could accept it prior to the deadline?
So it requires town meeting approval to accept. So it requires town meeting approval to accept the parcel. Um, so if the cons comm does not want the land in fee, then what we would do is we would seek an easement. Again, we would ask the developer to give it to us for free, um, and also to pay all back taxes. Um, uh, and that would be accepted at town meeting and it would go to the DPW.
And it's worth noting tonight, we are opening the town meeting warrant uh, for the town meeting on May sixth. So this is a timely question that we can't push much further, whether or not um, whoever decides to accept it, yes?
So while my preference is an easement, we can execute a license agreement. So if this is not something that can be resolved by town meeting, we would want to negotiate quickly with the developer. I mean, we have to talk to the developer anyways, but we would want a license agreement at a bare minimum um, granting us sufficient access to the pump station.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Uh, all right, Alex, go ahead.
Um, a couple of things. Um, having served on the conservation commission before and gone to MACC and so on, my understanding is that there are um, reasons why, other than this, just it's the, the merit of the land and so on, the value of the land. And there's also an expense to the town that we need to look at for maintaining the easement. There's monitoring and so on. There's also options should, and I don't know if this would fit um, either with the, with a third party holding the easement. Um, another preservation agency.
Absolutely. So that's permissible under the terms of the permit. Um, the homeowners association, so the permit envisioned potentially the homeowners association continuing to hold the open space parcel in fee and giving an easement to like the trustees of the reservation or some local land trust type equivalent. Um, without a homeowners association, you know, query what becomes. Does the developer continue to hold the land in fee and then it goes to a third party? But that structure generally is permissible.
So other than what Jim talked about, that, you know, the damaged goods, there has to be, sometimes the conservation commission should see some value, conservation and recreation value in it to hold it, but the town also has to be willing to, to have the, put the manpower to uh, maintaining the easement. It's not without staff or some cost, but, but we just need to be cognizant of that or again, deal with another agency. Um, the other thing is.
Just a quick question on that point, just so uh, before we go on to the next one. So Avery, like regardless of the, I mean, I don't want to say regardless of the land, but aside of the open space question, um, and all those are really good points, Alex, um, we need to maintain, we need to get and maintain control of the pump station because it has an, it has issues and implications to our water supply. Yes?
Correct.
So it could be held in some other form, not open space, for example. It could, as long, as long as, so it's almost two issues there is the land held as open space. And, but the primary issue sounds like the control of the pump station for maintenance.
So from a legal perspective, not policy, just from a legal perspective, the one thing that the town absolutely needs to do is get some type of control over the pump station. Whether that's through a license agreement or an easement or in fee, we need to have access that DEP deems sufficient to that pump station. Whether the town decides to acquire the conservation open space parcel, whether the town decides to acquire the road, whether the town decides to do anything else, those are policy decisions to make. But from a legal perspective, what we absolutely need to do is get control over that pump station.
What happens if we fail to do that to the homeowner and to the water?
I'm sorry, Alex, can you repeat the question?
So what happens if we fail, if we're not able to come to a, a term? What happens if we don't get that, something that's adequate, that's, that's allowable by or path, you know, accepted by the town?
So DEP could bring an enforcement order potentially against us. I'd have to kind of explore what that looks like, whether that's fines or some other um, mechanism to force us. Um, we do have the power of eminent domain. So as a last resort, if the developer is unwilling to work with us, we could take the pump station either in fee or an easement over the pump station to acquire the requisite ask set, uh, access. I highly doubt we're going that way. I would assume that the developer and all the property owners want to work with us. So I don't, I hate using that word in public, eminent domain. It's very scary. Um, but as, just so we are all on the same page, like it wouldn't get to the position where I would, I would hope it wouldn't get to that position, but because we have all the tools at our disposal.
And just so you know, it, it, it is a fine and the fine compounds um, monthly. So it would become very costly. It, it, it is in our best interest. Plus it's just, and it's a risk to the public water supply, so.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not suggesting this. People just need to um, understand what's the good and the bad. Um, Ibra, if it's not um, taken, I'm sorry, Ibra, um, the um, would DEP, why does DEP fine or enforce on us and not the developer?
Because it's connected to our public water supply. So when we allow something to connect to our public water supply, we have to follow all of DEP's rules. And one of their rules discusses access and control over all pump stations. So they have the regulatory authority to ensure that our sources are protected and this is just part of that. Um.
So, in summary. Alex, just, just so that you know, in two thousand nineteen, the water commissioners, which is the, the fact though, the DPW commissioners approved the petition from the developer to connect to the water.
Yeah, that's what I was going to just say.
Right. So what I'm, so we can't, I mean, it, it, it's not like they connected without permission. The, the proper, the proper authority allowed them to be able to do that.
Yes, that's what I was uh, good point up to Ibra. Okay. Um, the other thing is have, Avery, have you had occasion or a board to work with the developer at all? Or are we not at that point yet? Because my understanding is it may not, you have? Okay.
No, just, I'm just nodding in response. So I, I have not had conversations with the developer, but um, so I defer to town staff to see what has occurred.
Yeah, Kate, Kate has had conversations with the developer, but um, and Kate, you're welcome to comment on that other than to say yes, if you want to.
Yes, I, I, I had uh, conversations. There was a, a punch list that I drew up um, that I gave to the board um, in October of twenty-two. Um, I had talked to the developer a couple of other times after that. Um, I know that when um, DEP came in, um, the uh, DPW superintendent um, and I were trying to get ahold of the developer, um, and we have not uh, had much success with that. Um, at least in the past five or six months. So um, the, the thought would be to come up with some type of plan and, and have some written documentation, I would think. Um, if in fact we want to do it.
So Avery, let me, and Kate, let me clarify just what I see as some options on the control of the pump station, which is paramount. Uh, we develop an easement um, agreement that would get approved through town meeting um, uh, on May sixth. Um, we could also do a license agreement you mentioned if we didn't get that done. Um, the other is the Concom accepts the open space with the um, pump station on it, thereby giving us control of pump station, the town with the, the DPW controlling the pump station piece. Or an extension of that is the board of selectmen, the select board rather, does the same with, of course, the town meeting approval um, to accept the, all the open space land. Does that seem, do I have, am I missing an option? I mean, do nothing, I suppose is an option.
Yeah.
But as we all know, that is not an option because we need to get and maintain control of that pump station.
Hmm. So just sort of two sm- small tweaks. The license agreement, we would need to really look at and make sure it gives us a sufficient level of control. It's, I would feel more comfortable though as a temporary stopgap to a full easement, but something we can explore. Um, in terms of the select board accepting the open space, the select board, um, if the select board accepts it for general municipal purposes, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't carry with it any use restrictions. If the select board accepts it for conservation and rec purposes, arguably would. Whether that would comply with strictly with the terms of the permit is yet to be determined. If the permit does say, cons comm, yeah.
I threw that in as just a, if, if we needed to in the Hail Mary moment.
Yeah.
The preference would be easement um, approved at town meeting um, to get control of, of the water supply with or without Concom accepting the land um, uh, for open space. Yes?
I don't have a preference legally. Yeah, um, but no, you, you said easement, easement. Cons comm accepts the whole thing with DPW using boostage. And I guess if you really wanted to, we could explore the select board accepting it. Um, yeah.
When do we ask questions, Steve?
I was just, I was just turning to that, Mr. Tressel, to see if um, the chairs of the other committees or boards had questions.
Um, one, I have another question, just to talk, so.
Hold on, Dick. Go ahead, Alex.
Ibra, the um, parcel and question, it was the open space and you said there was um, in the permit, there was an, another lot as well.
So you're switching to the utility easement. Um, would you like me to address that question now or should I hold off, Steve?
So I think that's one that we needed to research into whether or not it's still needed. And that was the, her point was it was the open space and ninety-two Hawthorne Lane, right?
Right. So the, the utility easement is depicted on the plans as running over a portion of the open space parcel and then over lot nine, sorry, sixty-two Hawthorne, sorry.
I have an answer, I have an answer to that, Steve, when you get to it.
You have an answer, but you need to get to it, is that what you said?
No, no, no. I said when you get to it, because it's separate from the pump station. It's in a different area.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if the question right now is.
Yes, we're going to need an easement is, is the short answer to that.
We still will leave it. Okay.
It's the fire road to get to the other part of it.
Got it.
So the complication there is because, I mean, they're both held, held by private property owners, but lot nine is now owned by like a, a, a real individ, you know, an individual who's residing there is my understanding. This is different than just a developer. Um, and so we will need to start conversations with that property owner to the extent we need to get those rights.
Got it. Um, all right, uh, Mr. Tressel.
Wow, I, I don't know if I've got enough time here. Uh, what? It appears as though you're saying that the location of the thing is all right, even though it states that there should be no buildings on, on this land. It also sounds as though you're saying that the builder has control of all the money and we couldn't touch it if we tried to. It also sounds, uh, I, 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 I'm, I see you nodding, Steve. Uh, I also see that the builder could simply not pay the taxes and the town would wind up with the whole thing anyhow. Uh, just in a different point of time. What? I, I don't want to say it. I want to control myself. What do we have going on our side that could make anything that was not upheld by the builder enforceable? I, I wa- I want you to please talk from our side for a moment, rather than everything going to the builder. There's something that doesn't seem right there to me. Did we make a horrible deal and he's a hundred percent right? Or is someone due to, to make right what they agreed to do? That's my point. Thank you. And, and that's a financial interest especially that I'm dealing with.
Yeah. So Avery, I'll, I'll lean to you to give a whatever answer. I know you don't want to opine necessarily, but um, uh, the, and again, I wasn't on the select board then. Avery wasn't counsel. Kate wasn't here, lots of things. So we're doing a lot of pulling together um, from history. Uh, but there's a lot of discussion of this bond that, that um, uh, uh, entirely different planning board had. Um, and I'm using air quotes, yeah.
Steve, the reason I'm asking these questions is to resolve this, but we've got a lot of building going on in the future. I want to make sure we don't wind up in this situation every time we turn around.
I agree. So the short answer to you on the money piece is no, we can't touch it. Uh, we have no abilities to access the, the so-called.
I think I should sign off and, and let Ibra answer or part of that or some of them. Thank you.
Yeah, Dick, if it makes you feel any better, the planning board is working on an updated policy that would require a, a, a surety bond in the conventional sense for planning. And I'm sure that Frank and, and.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Yes, but it specifically says a number five, no buildings will be on this land. Yet a little dot that was not two size is, is rendered as being sufficient to put buildings on the land.
I was just answering the, how do we not? Okay, I was just answering your question about not perhaps getting into this financial situation again, that, that I think that the planning board is, is working on something.
Well, there's a lot more than just, just a surety bond to work on to make these things correct.
Dick, did I totally hear that? But we were, I, I understand your concerns. We've got to get to resolution on Hawthorne Lane.
I'm, I'm on.
Thanks. Avery, do you have any insights you can offer?
So I hear, I hear the frustration. Um, and I think like Steve said, we're, we're working with the facts that we have in front of us. Um, the, the zoning board of appeals upheld the building commissioner's determination. Um, and so we are where we are. Um, and I think that um, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, and in terms of the surety, I want you to feel comfortable that we are working closely with staff to ensure that we have um, you know, sufficient bonding or other types of um, control moving forward.
Um.
Um, well, we're, we, Alex, we just agreed to go to the other chairs first to just give them a chance to ask questions if they have any. Um, and in this instance, Tom for Concom, I guess I'll go to Jim. Um.
Yeah, just point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Yeah, point, point of clarification. I mean, one of the options is a conservation restriction, where we carve out an envelope area for where the pump station is, yes? Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Um, all right, thank you. Anybody else from the Concom that questions? Bruce or Dennis?
All right, you're hearing none. Oh, Bruce, are you unmuted? Are you?
No, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Streeter, do you have any?
So what my question is, is um, in clause number seven of the certificate of approval, it refers to the developers creating a second utility easement to span one of the lots of the open space and to connect to the Eagle Ridge property. Now, I see the original easement, which we've all been looking at with the pump station, but um, and possibly I'm blind, but I don't see the follow-on, the second easement to Eagle Ridge on the plans. Possibly I'm just blind.
Yeah, I mean, Avery has mentioned a couple of times. I think I've seen it, it's somewhere, Avery, I don't know if, I don't know if it's easy to pull up.
That would be quite material to the water department because you'd be able to have a loop, which was the point of doing.
So I think the record reflecting these easements is a bit spotty. Um, so we should, we know where one of these easements should be to the extent that we feel it's imperative to have another one of those easements, another easement. I think these are all conversations we can have with the developer. Um, so I, you know, I sort of turned to town staff to figure out what we think is most critical. And then from there, we can start these negotiations with the developer. One of the options, which I have not talked about, is reopening the permit process and getting amendments to these permits. The developer would need to be willing to come to the table in that situation and it's something we can definitely talk about as an option. Um, but this is a public meeting and so we're just trying to make clear what um, what we feel comfortable discussing tonight, uh, and keeping it to those, those discussions.
Uh, um, just um, the other easement was the one I was talking about, which is part of the, not only the fire access. And so the DPW has been maintaining that pump station over at Eagle Ridge, but one of the things is. And so the DPW has been maintaining that pump station over at Eagle Ridge, but one of the things is that didn't get done is an actual easement accepted by town meeting, so um, I've written to them that they're gonna need that as well, that should hopefully button that up.
Uh, Rob, do you have any ZBA questions at this point?
Um, I have a question.
Who's that?
Doug DeSager, DPW.
But, but I, I, hold on, I just, I, I called on Rob, I want to give him a chance if he's got any questions, then I will go to you. Rob, you, you're.
No, sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to get off mute, um, I don't have any, but I'll defer to Gene and Dennis for the other members of the ZBA if they have any questions.
I might have a little bit of clarity. Can Steve help? Um, this is Gene, the.
Can you speak up, Gene?
The easement that the planning board put from Eagle Ridge property line down to the pump station was in the event that the Eagle Ridge homeowners association would ever agree to allow an extension of their water booster station into this project. The water booster station in Eagle Ridge is owned by their homeowners association, we have no authority to tie into it or make a loop. We thought at the time it made great sense to loop the water and have the two booster stations connect. And that's why we were proposing that easement from their property debt.
Appreciate it. Um, Doug, do you have any? You had something you want to say?
I think he's, hold on, he's coming.
Hello, Douglas DeSager, DPW, Commissioner, I just got off the, uh, phone with Superintendent Kevin Barlett about Eagle Ridge. And I just asked him if we ever took over, just to clarify things, the pump house, and his answer was no, just what I thought. Just like this other one, other pump house. The stipulation with the pump house on Eagle Ridge, we said no about taking over till we got the pumps inspected. With these pump houses, it's like buying a new house or a car. But if you went to a house, you got to make sure the septic system passes, your car, your engine. We're not going to take, we should not take over these pump stations till we get these pumps inspected. Eagle Ridge is about thirty years old, and I was actually on the board, this project was brought to town.
I know, Doug, this isn't, we're not, this meeting is not about whether or not we take over the Eagle Ridge pump house, but your points are made, for sure.
Okay.
And Doug, Weston and Sampson gives you a report every month about the inspection of the pump house.
Right, absolutely, and before we move forth, we have to have those inspections right up to show the public that the, these pump stations will pass along with the new project we're talking about tonight. You know, we have no problem taking over the pumps, as long as, you know, it goes to the, at the town vote and we do the proper ways, absolutely. We are, we are willing to work with these people and the contractors.
Thank you, Doug. Um, all right.
Sorry, Chair, um, my comment, we do actually have an easement over the Eagle Ridge sub, um, pump house um, to access it for, um, for maintenance if something were to go wrong. So there is an operating agreement where the Eagle Ridge homeowners association pays for all of it. Weston and Sampson has an agreement with them, they notify us, but, you know, we do have, um, control, we're, we're sharing that documentation with DEP right now, but, um, we have found evidence of an easement.
Yeah, we absolutely have it for there, and Weston and Sampson is still sending all of their monthly reports for the one at Hawthorne, so it meets. It meets and exceeds, actually.
Okay, let's keep the conversation focused on the one at Hawthorne, which Kate just pointed to, that, that it meets and exceeds, uh, which is good, uh, but I appreciate Doug's sensitivity to wanting to make sure we accept something that does meet and exceed. Okay, um, we have, I promised we would try to get this done before the planning board meeting starts in eight minutes, um, I don't know that.
You were going to come back to me after you spoke to the chairs?
But let me just, let me, I'm just trying to level set, um, uh, to me, the, the, the largest, the big issue for right now is this control over the pump station and whether or not, and how we were going to exercise control or, or acquire control over it. The remaining items, of course, that we want to talk about, there are many, Mr. Tressel brought up many, which are definitely worth discussing, and I think the planning board is working on solving for, um, in a, in a really strong way, solving for making sure this doesn't happen again. Um, the big, big questions out there, other than the easement issue, which I think both all of the easements, the utility one and, and the easement for the pump house, um, are under this control of the pump house piece. Um, I don't feel like we're in a position right now, and I don't think the town is, to discuss the public way piece, um, or the private way to public way, but um, I could be, I could be wrong, I would love it if we could leave this conversation with at least some marching orders that look like Kate and Avery are working on developing, um, the easement work, um, for all the easements we need for the control. And then the Concom considering whether or not they're going to accept the open space land, or if we have to go another route so that we can get it on a town meeting warrant and get some clarity to that as soon as possible, um, by May sixth, that we can act on a town meeting. Does that sound like a, a direction we can? Everyone's ok, seem okay with that, and then we can tackle some larger issues later, um. Jim, and then Alex, are you, I know you had questions, and Dennis Hubbard has his hand up, but Jim?
Um, it sounds good to me, um, so Dennis is a Concom member, maybe we should hear what he has to say.
Dennis, go ahead.
Sure, I was just gonna say, I think another action item is what are the costs we would be accruing from a town perspective if we were to take ownership of it? Uh, versus if we had like a right to access easement, uh, I think that needs to be part of the conversation.
Steve, I can try to answer that.
Yeah, go ahead, Avery, thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, so I can't give you dollar figures, but I can talk about it in big pictures, and we can definitely get dollars, but from my perspective, we have no obligation right now to actually maintain the pump station, that obligation in court, according to the permitting, was really supposed to be done by the homeowners association. The bigger question, so from taking it in an easement, that should continue. But with the developer sort of being MIA, if they go away and our water source is compromised, in actuality, we likely would have to expend funds. So my biggest concern is without a homeowners association, who and if the developer walks away, is there really a difference between us taking it in fee versus us taking an easement over over the, um, the pump house? And so these are conversations we need to have with the developer. We understand that there is some pool, there is some fund set aside that we don't have access to, but potentially that could be a negotiating, um, strategy for us to at least get some compensation if the developer is really just going to walk away.
Thanks, Avery, uh, Alex.
So, um, Avery, you alluded to one of my questions here, first, um, and, and Dick's, Dick asked the point blank question. I think it's important for us in this whole discussion, we're, we're, as Steve said, this was before all of our time, we didn't have regulatory authority, although some of us were around and watched it, but that doesn't really matter because we have, we are responsible for the succession of our boards and our staff. And I think that the leverage, um, should have been a bond, I think we all see that now, we used to have a bond, I don't know why we stopped doing that, but I'm pleased that, uh, the planning board, uh, that Steve announced the planning board was working on that. Um, but the most important, um, thing was issuing of certificates of occupancy, because certainly, um, why you issue a certificate of occupancy without having, um, guaranteed potable water? I don't, I mean, I don't know, I think that that's important for us, if that is an issue, that we make sure that future COs are not issued, in other cases, as Dick said, there's a lot of building going on, something we need to learn from. And one of my last questions is, um, my understanding is that the developer, and I could be completely wrong, the developer's done a lot of different projects in town. I don't know, I don't think they're doing anything currently, but if they are not and they don't exist in the same legal form as they did now, if they're out of business or not answering, that becomes, this whole discussion is sort of elementary, my understanding, and it becomes that we still need to get that?
What's your question?
Is, is the town on the hook if the developer is not in business?
Avery?
I think that's a complicated legal question, what is, we are responsible for our public water supply system, I think is.
The short answer.
If he's not, if he's not in business, who owns the, the pump station then?
Well, we don't have any evidence that he's not in business, so I don't want to create an, any sort of news story that he's not in business, so that there's anything other than.
Let me word it a different way then, Steve. If we take over the land with the pump station on it, do we own the pump station?
Yes.
Okay, and if we own the pump station, what is the value of the pump station ballpark?
Well, to securing our water source, invaluable, um, but, uh, I don't know what the actual value is.
And and, uh, tying into this, you mentioned the, uh, Eagle Ridge. Is it possible to tie the two systems together and do away with the pump station? It, will, will, will that work?
Maybe.
Because, because if we own the pump station doing that, then we have the value of that to go against the cost of tying the two together.
Yeah, I, that's a lot of supposition, I don't have the.
I know it's a lot of supposition, but I want to make sure we understand who owns what, when, because we shouldn't figure it out at the beginning.
Okay, Dick, I, I hear you. We didn't figure out at the beginning, we weren't here, we're now just trying to, to deal with, to deal with previous boards, um, uh, so uh, but I also don't want to get bogged down in anything Eagle Ridge related, this, we need to just button up this piece and let the planning board move on to their thing.
Well, that is one of the solutions though, Steve, some possible solutions, it's.
Well, but it's not until we take the land with the pump station on it or the pump station easement, so that's, that's the piece that's before us first. Yeah, yeah, but I appreciate that, um, Kendra and then Frank.
Hey, can you hear me, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, um, so, uh, Kendra Dickinson, Lancaster Planning Board, um, and speaking as a private resident for to open way.
I don't think you can do that, you're in the middle of a planning board meeting.
Oh, okay, so never mind, I guess I'm just speaking while I'm on the planning board.
You're just speaking as, yeah.
Um, one of the concerns that I know we've discussed loosely is, you know, what's the fire department's feedback on this? I know that there's water pressure issues outside of water quality, but I, I've heard talking to the fact that the water table is below the level of the pump house, which makes the pump house regardless of tying in the two systems mandatory to get added with pressure to those homes and.
Yeah, I think Kate has an answer to that, Kendra.
Perfect, thank you.
The answer to that, um, is that there's no truth to that statement, um. I had heard it as well, and so on August thirty-first, the fire chief wrote to me and said, from the fire department standpoint, there's nothing outstanding, there's adequate water pressure, access to the fire road would be helpful for the easement, that would be the only thing the fire department would need.
Thank you, uh, Frank.
So I just wanted to say, in terms of the planning board's meeting time, our agenda is flexible, so don't stop this discussion on Harvey that. Uh, the second would be that, uh, both, one presumes, both the developer and certainly the town carries some levels of liability insurance. And it would seem to me, given that some of the mistakes that were made, especially on the developer's side, that, um, there might be a position to have a claim made against that policy. And that that might provide some backup assets from the lack of the bond and what was previously.
Okay, um, all right, anybody else have any comments, um, if not, I'm going to suggest a step forward, Carol, there's no public comment at this meeting, so unfortunately, this is just for the boards that are here. Um, uh, okay, so if not, Avery, I'm going to look at you while I say this to see if this makes sense, and you can scowl or shake your head or wave me off, but, um, I would love it if we could have a mutual agreement, I don't think every board is to vote on this, but to task town staff, Kate, to work with Avery on, um, uh, continuing to put meat on the bones of the easement question, uh, the same, all the easements, um, and get us ready to go to town meeting in one of the two or three forms that we can do that, um. At the same time, I'd like the conservation commission to, to somewhat call the question before your commission on what your position will be, will you ask for, um, uh, the land, will you accept the, the, the open space land, and you don't need to answer now, but I would love it if it were, if we were moved up on your agenda, so to speak, so we had that, so that as we're planning for town meeting, we have a pathway that we know we can, we can go down. And then thirdly, I'd love to ask the planning board to dig into the question of if we need the extension past May nineteenth, uh, and Kate, you can, and I think you can work with the planning board and the planning director and folks, the planning department on this. Um, how do we get them to ask for it, and will the planning board grant the, the extension on, uh, to get that worked on? Is that, does that sound, Avery, I didn't see you vomit while I was talking, so I'm assuming it was somewhere in the range of palatable.
Those are all fine policy decisions.
She loves to say policy decision. Um, uh, Jimmy, you look like you want to say something, and then I'll go to Kate.
Um, no, I'm just figuring in my head when we can get it on the agenda, I'll, I'll talk to our chair and, um, we'll pick a date. I know Tom will have to recuse himself, um, but I'm hopeful that we can get it on the agenda for twenty-seventh, the twenty-seventh. No, no promises right now.
Understood, understood, uh, Kate. Hodges.
Oh, sorry, um, I don't know why this, I think I might have hit it by accident, I apologize.
Oh, your hands on it, okay, great, well then, I was worried I was going to get schooled for, um, suggesting something outside of the realm. Uh, Frank, does that's, and I don't, I don't want to presuppose what you guys will even talk about, whether, and, and maybe it's not even necessary, but it seemed like the extension thing is something that is going to be looming before we know it.
I'm sure it will, you can put it on at the appropriate times, but I want to remind everyone, the last planning board meeting before the nineteenth is May thirteenth. So, uh, if the planning board in its infinite wisdom is going to grant this, that's the last date at which you can do it.
The thirteenth? That's the, that's the town election day.
Well, in that case, it's got to be done sooner, in that case, it's got to be done by late April, that's got to be the fourth Monday in April.
Okay, which will be just a week before the town meeting. But that's not, that's not relevant for the town, that's not something we're going to consider at the town meeting, but that's awesome, all right. Just wanted to make sure we were all sort of on the same page, uh, am I missing any glaring things?
Uh, Steve, Steve, I have, uh, one, does, does the, uh, does town council have a recommendation for a path forward that we can consider, or are we supposed to come up with a recommendation for a path forward? Which would have to go to town council anyhow, so why are we beating around the bush, why don't we just get to that?
Well, so I don't want to, I'll, I'll, I'll let her answer, I mean, I think she's taken us through what neat, what sort of needs to be done in terms of control over the pump house and some options for how we can get there, and I think what we're doing now is if we go with the, what I've just laid out, asking her and Kate to, to put together all the relevant pieces to secure all the easements we need to, whether we do it through acquisition of land, through the Concom another way, or if it's just an easement for the pump house and tackling the other utility easement, did I cover that right, Avery, or did I miss something?
Correct, yeah, I think that.
Back and forth all night, but we need a position, a recommendation to move some direction.
Well, it's up to the, ultimately, we, we have to take control over the pump house somehow, just from a, of what's best for the town, we have to do that. So, uh, from the select board perspective, we'll take actions to, to do that, the, the, one of the ways is still before the conservation commission is an option, which is they accept the land. And then we would get the easement for, um, the pump house, and that will be resolved, but I want to be respectful of another independently elected commissioner, or a group of people here, and, uh, independently chosen group of people, who, um, I don't want to prejudge something for them, I want the conservation commission to be able to make a determine on their, determination on their own and report back. If they decide not to accept the land, then we will have to. If they decide not to accept the land, then we will have to make a different determination on how to do so.
And I think the only thing I'd I'd add is everything we've talked about tonight are all legal options. So at this point, it's really just a policy decision for the town to make. Do you acquire an easement over the pump station and leave the land uh in the hands of the developer? The developer is obligated to come into compliance with his permit, or do we agree to accept the whole open space parcel in fee in which we would get the pump station, meeting our DEP requirements and um, also satisfy, helping the developer to satisfy his obligation to protect that parcel. Those are both legally acceptable options. It's up to the the town to make a decision on which way they want to move forward.
And what I'm suggesting is that we plan for both options, and if the Concom chooses to accept the land fee, um, then great, great, but also if they don't, I'm not pushing. It's up to them. Uh, we will be prepared to do it in another week.
Yeah, that's wise.
Yeah, Tom, Tom and Dennis, and then Alex.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a little bit of background. Um, so I know that the deed has been offered by Melanson Brothers twice to the town for the open space parcel. Um, the first one was at around the time of the violation, uh, when David Coons um, you know, expressed his uh his concerns. Uh, there was a second deed offered, but I believe the previous town council um, thought that it was clouded either because of the violation or because of the booster station. So I guess I would like um, town council to to offer some opinion on whether uh, you know, they think that if simply by having the commission accept the deed would would be appropriate, that there's no cloud there, that, thank you.
So that's dependent on a lot of factors. I would need to see the deed that that was originally provided. Um, it's not something I can discuss tonight.
Uh, Dennis. Understood, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to seek some clarification, uh, Mr. Chair, on something you said. Is it in order to become compliant with the D for the DEP statutes, we need to gain access rights, access slash maintenance rights, which we, or is it that we have to take ownership of the entire pump house?
No, access and maintenance.
Access and ma- so so we can get there, we just access the maintenance rights. We don't necessarily have to take ownership of the whole.
No, but we do, we do the easement together.
We we do it in the easement, though.
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Alex.
Avery, my um recollection, because we have been through this for the three years that I've been on the board, every year with a different board, was that the account that was held by uh the developer, the Melansons, also required a co-signature from uh the planning board. Is that incorrect?
Correct. So for some reason, I I can't figure out why the developer would request a release of these funds from the planning board. The planning board would agree to it or not agree to it, and then the funds would be released as determined by the planning board. But our office, town staff, and the bank can find no indication that that is required or that we act, we have any authority to access those funds.
And in fact, the bank told us we don't.
Right, correct. Yeah, we spoke with the bank.
It would be interesting, just so we understood, because we have to learn from the mistakes to find out when that changed or if it never existed, so.
Yeah, but I, just for the purpose of this, Alex, I totally agree with you. Um, and I know that the planning board is working on it. I want to stay focused on the pump house and not on the other issues. Do you have anything related to pump house?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest um that that is our path forward, at least for now. Um, Jim, I'm going to speak to you. It's the vice chair. You'll work on scheduling a Concom meeting. Um, uh, and um, uh, Kate and Avery, you'll start just preparing us for one of those two pathways. I also will ask of my colleagues on here and our many different, which, by the way, thank you all. It's a fantastic showing of a lot of very busy people who do an awful lot of stuff for the town to show up for this really important conversation, so I'm grateful. I sadly, we're not done. Uh, we are going to be done for this evening, but I do want to schedule an additional meeting because I do think we need to dig into um, the road question. Um, so I will ask if we can work to schedule a um uh, a future meeting and um Kate can work with you all on coordinating that uh on the road question and moving forward.
Steve, on the, on the agenda, it said, um, the boards and other interested parties. So if we want to have other people speak, great. If we don't, that's fine, but I think.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we're running, we're running tight. I I we haven't made a, yeah.
I understand, it's just, we just need to change that.
Um. Great. Uh, thank you all. Um, so I guess I'll go round robin for you to um close out your meetings. Uh, Jim, do you want to end the adjourn the Conservation Commission meeting?
Uh, sure, um, I'll take motion to close the Conservation Meeting.
So moved.
Make the motion.
Okay, uh, motion made and seconded. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Bruce?
Hi.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I think that's it.
Hmm, thank you all very much. Um, planning board, since I know you got stuff going on. Frank, do you want to go next? Oh, you're adjourning this one and starting a new one, right?
Well, no, we're not actually adjourning. We are agenda calls for a bifurcated Zoom. So our Zooms will now part company, and those who wish to stay with the planning board can use the Zoom in our agenda. Uh, Steve, thank you very much for all of this. Appreciate what you guys, you and Kate did to pull this together. And uh, we look forward to continuing to walk down this road.
Thanks, Frank, appreciate it.
And Dennis, just make sure you stay on so we can close the ZBA meeting. Don't jump too quick.
ZBA, I'll go to you next, Rob. Close the ZBA.
Okay. Take a motion to close the ZBA meeting?
Second.
Okay, move by Gene. Second by Dennis. Roll call vote, Dennis Hubbard?
Aye.
Gene Rich? Gene?
Aye.
Rob, Alex, aye, three, nothing. We are adjourned at seven fourteen.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. Uh, FinCom, Mr. Tressel?
Yes, uh, separate motion to close the meeting.
I'll second, Michelle. That's Wes.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote. Jocelyn, not present. Emily?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Stan, not present. Dick, yes, the meeting is closed.
Thanks, sir. All right, the select board, we are not done, so we can move on to our next items on our agenda. Anybody who I'm sure you'll all want to jump to the planning board. Um. I'll wait until, um. Avery, I think.
Oh, I think I'm going to jump off unless you need me.
I think we're good. No, I think we're good. Just going to forgive you. I was, yeah.
Hi, hi.
All right, so next item on the agenda, administration budget uh and policy is to open the two thousand and twenty four annual town meeting warrant for an annual town meeting scheduled for May sixth. Uh, and then we also have to open the warrant for the town election on May thirteenth. And uh, then we're going to set a date um uh, at a future meeting for when we will close the warrant, but I think we'll set the date um at our next meeting. Uh, so Alex, I'll entertain a motion to open the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second, any debate or any discussion?
Hmm, no, could we, didn't we discuss like April first or something for closing? Do we want to?
I think we did, but I I want to give, uh, I, we would have done it tonight if Jason had been here, but I didn't want to at least give him a voice, so we'll do it at the next one. Um, um, but yes, uh, that we had sort of discussed that. Um. Uh, so stay tuned, folks. That looks like it probably is somewhere in that range. Um, all right, all those in favor, say aye, Alex?
Aye.
Steve, aye. So um, town meeting warrant has been open. Uh, and then Kate, this is just, we have to open the warrant that schedules the election, is that right?
Right.
Okay, so entertain a motion to do that for an election on May thirteenth?
Yeah, so moved.
Uh, second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor? Alex? Steve, aye, okay. Thank you. Uh, and again, our next meeting will have a date on which we're going to close the warrant, so people will know. Um, Kate, some updates on the FY twenty five budget numbers? All good?
Uh, yes, sorry, I'm just putting away one behind and on the other.
Got it.
Uh, yes, so uh, we have a version two um of the budget that is out. It's um in the administration and select board tab. On the left-hand side, it says FY twenty five budget. Well, it says budget and then FY twenty five, and so we are down to um with our zero-based budgeting, uh, a decrease of thirty six thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars in municipal non-school expenses. Um, that's for personnel and non-personnel. Um, we are still waiting on the final numbers from Nishoba only. All of the other numbers um came in, including uh Minuteman, that is down and Asabet is up uh about a thousand dollars. Uh, the finance director and I met with the superintendent and the business um manager for the school. Um, we went over our number. Um, they assured us both that the number that was there um is uh, akin to their wish list, everything that they could possibly want, um, which obviously was a one point three million dollar increase, um, that they uh have been working on a number of different iterations of the budget. Um, one of them is a reduction of about a million dollars. And um, while our number isn't a guarantee, um, it certainly will be closer to that. Um, as I said to uh the finance committee and the select board when I sent the link to the newest budget, we just need to remember that the the budget here does not uh talk about the first payment for the debt. So um, while that's a discussion for another time, understand that um, that was obviously accepted at special town meeting and, you know, that will be coming due. So um, that's a conversation for another time, but please don't forget that that's on the horizon.
That it is one to be a, okay.
Um, but at least we are moving in the right direction, which is down.
Well done. Well done you, well done Cheryl, well done all the staff who've been working on it. Um, and thanks to the finance committee for the work they've been doing as well. Um, Alex, any questions?
I do not. Thank you, Kate.
Uh, all right, um, next is something Kate and I talked about because it's, I'm a big fan, I know you are too, Alex, of good governance. Um, our poor Kate Hodges, not to reveal too much about her life, she takes one vacation a year, and this is, this is it. And she's not very, due respect to you, Kate, not very good at it, um, because she checks in way too much. Um. And so the uh, the next item is just a um acknowledgement of having an acting town administrator. Um, while um Kate is um out of town, to give Kate a real chance to actually unplug and relax. And um, uh, Kate, anything?
Uh, no, no, uh, we had a staff meeting. Um, uh, Kelly Dolan is our Health and Human Services um, director. Uh, she also um has a master's in public administration and um she is a wealth of of knowledge, a highly competent professional and um and frankly, will be able to do my job, uh, at least the parts that I'm leaving for her, uh, without any any problems whatsoever. Um, obviously, the staff know if there's something that that can wait, it should. Uh, we're not trying to pile on to um an already busy Health and Human Services Department, but um, keeping things moving, uh, dealing with um any type of personnel situation that comes up while I'm gone. Um, certainly, uh, getting warrants together for uh for things to be signed, signing payroll, et cetera. Um, so uh, that would be my ask, it's a continuity of service plan and um. Yeah, and I would send something out uh to all town staff tomorrow, just making them aware of that. And thank you to Kelly for uh agreeing when I asked her.
Great. So um, I'm going to just ask for a vote to ratify this, although I don't believe it's necessary. And also, I'm making myself fully available to Kelly if there's anything she needs, as I am available to Kate. As chair, um, uh, if there's anything she needs as well, and I know all the other department heads are going to be fantastic, so. Um, uh, Alex, I'd look for a motion just to acknowledge that from February fifteenth to February twenty fourth, uh, Kelly Dolan will be serving in the role of acting town administrator while Administrator Hodges is on vacation. But I'm looking for a mo- just say, you could say it's removed, or you say, don't, you don't want to make.
I did, I was just muted, so moved.
Okay, second, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Alex?
Aye.
Steve, aye, okay. Go forth on vacation. Not yet, we're not done. Um. Uh, next is review uh and adoption of a forest legacy program. Uh, request from the Conservation Commission. Um, I want to be clear, um, at least my um uh, my, it's not my intention to have a vote on that tonight, because, but I do want to hear um folks, and I know uh, my next door neighbor had sent in a letter on behalf, I don't know if it was on behalf of the Land Trust or not, but um would love to hear from if, is anyone from the Concom on here still to talk about it, or?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm still here.
Oh, sorry, Tommy, you moved on my screen, sorry. So, Tom, why don't you take it away and then I'll acknowledge uh Mr. Lidstone, if he has any comments.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so uh, Mr. Lidstone can certainly talk uh better to the forestry leg- forest legacy program uh than I can. Um, but the, to sum up quickly, um the Land Trust is is asking us, uh, asking the Conservation Commission uh, to accept conservation restrictions, uh, if the, if the select board is so willing uh, on uh portions of the town forest and blood forest that are not currently uh permanently conserved. Uh, so the commission already holds either in fee or conservation restrictions on a significant portion of the town forest, um, but the majority of the land is is not permanently protected. Um, so the proposal is that the Conservation Commission uh take CRs on the remaining portion as the town of Lancaster's uh matching funds uh for the grant program. Um, and so the commission voted at its last meeting uh to accept those CRs if the select board is willing. Um, and so that's my spiel, uh, be happy to hand it over uh back to you or Mr. Lidstone.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Lidstone? Uh, the floor is yours.
Yep, thank you. The uh, the options are not just for the Concom to hold CRs, uh, except for those private parcels which have offered only CRs. Although some are looking at paying for the surveying to split off some land and maybe offer it in fee. They haven't made it their minds yet. Uh, but uh, I believe uh certainly um Ann Fuller and her brother uh would refer to continue to own the land and do a CR, so that is certainly part of it. Uh, the land in the blood forest, um, it can be CRs, or it could be a complete transfer. Would probably be a higher dollar value of match to do a complete land transfer instead of a CR. But I think we've given the drop-off of one of our largest parcels, at least so far, uh, that we were going after, that would probably be enough. Although CRs split, you know, a different ownership, it might just be cleaner to make it a Concom ownership, but I'll leave that to the Concom and the select board to decide. Uh, I I do want to point out that this is a an opportunity for millions of dollars in federal money to pay for the due diligence, the surveys, the CR writing, the title searches, the. the due diligence, the surveys, the C R writing, the title searches, the all this stuff. Um, and it's going to protect land that is currently being used and appreciated by the population for recreation. And also happens to be extremely valuable land for habitat, for environmental habitat. I won't get into those details. Anybody who wants to know, I'll tell you more than you care to listen to, but.
I'm sure it's the right amount of what people would wanna listen to.
Yes. However, uh I think it's kind of a easy question up to that point. Uh, some landowners in town get to uh donate land or donate a C R and get compensated for it. Uh, the the town only has to kick in a transfer of ownership from the town to the Concom or a transfer of the, or or of a C R, either way. Uh, but the the only thing that's gonna slow the process down is that between the Land Trust and the Wild and Scenic Rivers uh Steering Committee. Uh, they don't have enough money to do everything at once. And while unlike the last time the Land Trust got involved with a forest legacy um program, the state has promised that they will pay as we go. That as as we spend money, we can submit it to the uh, state, they'll review it and then get back to us. They don't want it like willy-nilly, so I suspect there'll be like a quarterly process where all of the projects, all the different towns, submit the bills that they've spent so far. Then probably a quarter later, you get the money back. Uh, that will slow us down if we're limited to the ten or twenty thousand dollars that are available. If we had a deeper pocket to borrow money from, um that would speed it up and probably make it so we can hire people on multiple projects and make it a little bit cheaper, but don't know how that stuff works. Uh, matter of fact, and I don't know how the budget works, talked with Dick Tressel, uh, and he uh, said he didn't think this really needed to be something that get worked into the budget. There are workways a- around that, but I'll leave that to you guys that know that process. And just want you to know, I'll be coming back sometime in the future, saying, hey, can you fund this? So if you're okay with my doing that, you might hear from me again. Other than that, I think I think I will answer questions if you have any concerns.
I don't have any questions at the time. Um, we definitely were gonna dig into it more and when Jason's back. Uh, we'll take the appropriate um steps, uh, and we might have some questions at that point, but I appreciate your vast knowledge, um, and your willingness to communicate to us before this meeting and then come to the meeting. Uh, and I appreciate the um, uh, the Concom as well, so. Um, Alex, do you have any questions for Mr. Lidstone?
Sure, um, this bears putting this grant into perspective. Um, and um, as you've indicated that we're not gonna vote tonight and we're gonna take it up, it may be helpful to invite Victoria and Frank to the next meeting because they've worked um hard on this and deserve a lot of kudos for their, their work. So, um, it it just to so, because a lot of people don't understand this, if they're not and just full disclosure, I'm a member of the Land Trust, I've been a member of the Scenic Rivers, um, N W R A and other organizations that have partnered on this grant. But this is a highly competitive federal grant uh, which the Northeast rarely is allocated funds for. The funds, as Bob indicated, are in the millions. Lancaster is just one community and many communities which were cobbled together. And the intent of the federal government is to protect swaths of land that are um, ecologically or environmentally exceptional. So most of the money for this, the forest legacy typically goes to parcels out in the West, you know, some of these big ranches that you're thinking about or in the mountains because you can get and secure more land. Um, more bang for the buck. So it's really exceptional. My question to Bob would be um, it, the deadline is critical. What uh, and the other thing is what I always ask with my selectmen hat on is you talked, you threw around kind of loosely money, so we're gonna need to know between you and Victoria and so on, just to talk about what kind of funds. I'm not arguing the merit of them, but um, certainly what the, what it is. Um, and I will say that I think everybody agrees that our town forest, which this will protect, is a gem. Um, and it increases the value of the lands around it and our community as a whole. Um, so protecting it is a, is a high priority. Uh, but we just need to know what the cost is gonna be.
So your questions to Bob are the timing and the cost?
It is.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, um, what's the deadline? The deadline is two years from when the state signed the contract with the feds. And I do not know when that happened, but that was probably recent. Uh, so we've got about, about two years, a little bit less than two years. Uh, the original estimate for the total due diligence um, for all the Lancaster parcels was a hundred thousand dollars. And again, that will probably be done over as much as two years. Uh, the state has promised to pay as we go. So there would be a rotating amount of varying amounts um, totaling in the end a hundred thousand dollars at the most, if everyone still comes through.
So pardon, pardon the interruption, Bob, but you see what you're saying is what I took, but just to be sure, the state, we forwarded it and the state reimburses us?
Right, if you forward, you said, we've spent this for a title search.
And that's what you said takes a month or something, and they pay back and then you then.
Well, I I, again.
Yeah, and totally, I'm not gonna hold you to any of that, yeah.
Okay, when my, when, when my wife did this, I, things, things were not so uh good and the, we, we were on the hook for ninety thousand dollars for uh, uh, two or three years. But they have promises that that they, they would facilitate the payout as we go, so that we will not end the project with a big uh debt, so.
All right. Um, all right, um, so my suggestion is that we work, uh, we've Kate worked with council to get into this just so that we, and then I agree, Alex, let's get to have some stakeholders and get a future meeting together. So we can have an assessment from council about what our exposure is, what the steps are. Get the answers to the questions of when they were signed, things like that, uh, and then uh we can move that ball forward. Or we can get to a decision.
Yeah, I, I, I'm available for whoever wants to uh have questions and we have experts at the uh N R W A that uh will answer anything really hard.
I think if they could come next time, or just a, a small group, easy gathering, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Well, we're, yeah, we'll work with um, Kate will work with council and um, and when we've got information, we'll get it ready together and we'll go from there.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, all right, next on the agenda
was depending on which version you're looking at, an appointment. We are not making that appointment tonight. Um, as the candidate is meeting with the Historical Commission uh prior to coming to us. Um. Uh, next is just that our next select board meetings are Mondays, March fourth, twenty twenty-four, and Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Town offices will be closed uh this coming Monday, uh, February nineteenth, in observance of President's Day. And uh, with that, I thank you all for joining us this evening for our fun show, uh, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Night.
Have a good night.